Good evening. At 6:30, we'll call the Monday, March 13th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. We could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? No additions to the agenda. Mayor? All right. I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. That'll take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And seeing none, we will close public comments. And with that, we will move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. And with that, I'd like to thank the mayor baseball club for their donation to the fire department. Greatly appreciated. We will move to business items. Number 11, approval to rescind the award of bid for the 2023 street seal coating from the February 27th, 2023 council meeting. So we had a little bit of a mix up in our last go around. Dave Martini had received a couple of bids, one for our city, one for another city at the exact same time. And he ended up getting them flip flopped. Getting them flip flopped. So we had gone through the February 27th meeting. We thought we had the correct ones. We didn't. We had approved Pearson Brothers at that one for a little over, I think it was just under $106,000. Dave came back and he said, I called me and he said, I made a mistake. I switched up yours with another city. So he gave us the correct one. And the apparent low bidder on it is Allied Blacktop this time. And there is this $101,187.50. So it was lower than the original quotes we had received. So in order to correct this, we would need to, one, rescind the award of the bid from the last meeting, and then, two, re-award. And that's what we're looking at. I'll look for a motion to rescind the award of bid for Pearson's brother in the amount of $105,634.00 from the February 27th, 2023 council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries four zero. So with that, then, I'll look for a motion to approve the bid to Allied Blacktop for the amount of $101,187.50.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries four zero. With that, that will take us to city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Ely.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Halt.
I have nothing.
And Nick, did you want to add something?
Yes. Two quick reports here. One, a little bit of update on the pavilion, and then Brad Hendricks is here to re-
To introduce himself. Let's make reintroductions as our town police officer. First with the pavilion. Yesterday at 12:10 PM, we had the pavilion start on fire. At 12:15, smoke really started building out of it. Fire department responded and put out the blaze. We had the contractor and the architect here this morning to meet with us, took a look at the building. We're scheduling to have, so the contractor's insurance carries on this, so they will be covering the damages. They're working on getting the structural engineer and the claims adjuster out at the same time. So they can take a look at it together. The structural engineer can go over and figure out what needs to stay, what needs to go. And then the adjuster can take those notes right then and there. We're hoping that the masonry is salvageable. Perhaps at worst, we take a couple courses off and then redo. If that's the case, and we can keep the masonry, then they'll just need to redo the roof on that. That has much shorter lead time than, say, the masons. The masonry block, that had the longest lead time. If it's just the roof, they were spitballing perhaps a two-month delay in construction for final date on that. But again, they got to go through the process. They were just spitballing two months, they think was going to be the delay in it if it's just the roof on it. Cause of it, we do not suspect arson. So they had some propane heaters in there. They were warming up the interior so that they could do concrete work on the inside. They had some insulation that was affixed to the ceiling. We believe that some of that came down, fell on near the heater, and that's what started the fire. So that's the updated report on the pavilion. Who did you say from a structural standpoint? Is our architect looking at that, or is the builder? Architect. Architect will have the structural engineer that they have on staff take a look at it. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Is that it? Is that everything? Yep. That's for the pavilion. And then we'll introduce our town deputy for new council members who have, maybe haven't met him, Brad Hendricks.
So council members, mayor, Nick, nice to see all of you again. Derek, I introduced myself to you before the meeting started, but again, my name is Brad Hendricks. This will be my third year as the town liaison for the city of mayor and new Germany from the sheriff's office. So it's always good to be back, and I know my hours have adjusted again. But my understanding is that the city is working with our commander to figure all that stuff out. So I don't have many questions on that one, but any other questions you guys might have for me? I'm open for anything right now, so.
Well, I have nothing either, so.
Okay.
Thanks for stopping in and checking in and.
Like I said, Nick has my phone number and my email address, so if anybody from the council needs to get ahold of me, you can get that information from him, and shoot me any questions you have, and I'll get back to you, so. All right, Derek, welcome to the council.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I have nothing to report on either. So with that, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We are adjourned. All right, with that, we'll move right into the workshop, and we'll call the meeting to order. All right. We're good to go. First item we have for the workshop, discussion on cybersecurity assessment and implementation and the financial impact that we're facing. With us tonight to talk about the subject, we have Jimmy Brand. He's our IT consultant for the city. He's going to get up and talk about the IT infrastructure we have in place, a little bit of the history of when he came on board and what work he's done in that time. And we'll talk about what we have. And then Christian Torkelson here, he is from the League of Minnesota Cities. He is their new cybersecurity loss control consultant. I believe you said you were hired in September.
Early September, so a little past six months. I don't know if we quite say new at this point.
Not quite new, off the probationary period?
Just barely.
Just barely. So he's going to talk about services that the league can offer to help the city and a comprehensive look at our IT infrastructure policy training, that sort of stuff, and putting together a package that's holistic in nature, comprehensive in nature, rather than us, say, piecemealing here and there on some stuff. He's going to help give us a hand in putting together that total package for moving forward. And then on the final part, we'll be taking a look at, I got spreadsheets prepared that we can look at some figures and talk about the financial impact. So with that, I'll have Jimmy come on up.
I'll pass out a couple things real quickly.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank everybody who pronounced me. I'm Jimmy Brand. I'm the owner of Brand Networking LLC. Had the distinct pleasure of helping your city out from December of 2019 till now. One of your previous senior managers was a resident at an employee in Maple Plain. As I got to know her, she called me up and said, hey, we need some help over here. So we had a pretty simple network back then. It was a little network storage device, a wireless access. It's pretty rudimentary, but very, very workable, but it just wasn't as secure. So when we came in, I think the city council knows how much times we once spent through budgets, so we've actually put together a really, really nice network here. So what I basically did on the history is to go through and look and say what each department kind of has. So just on a real summary basis, the city hall has six different PCs and laptops. The fire department has two. Public Works has two, plus an iPad. We have SCADA Systems for water treatment at that water plant and wastewater with one workstation between them. So from a topology standpoint, we look under network infrastructure. What we did a year and a half ago, I suppose, we put a big dark fiber ring in with Carver Link. So originally had Carver Link internet service at multiple locations, paying bills for like five different places. Now we have one bill. So what we did is we implemented Fiber Ring, and that connects all of our devices and all of our stuff together. And you'll see in the future, if you look back, there's a diagram of the Fiber Ring, and you'll see all different 10 locations, how the fiber is put together. Actually, there's another one besides that one. That's my network architecture. But this actually is what Carver Link and Randy Lees has put together for the diagram of the actual pairs of cables and how our actual Fiber Ring connects. So it can go from the water tower, it could go to the treatment plant, it could go from here, it could go to the ballpark. So this way, we can actually connect a lot of different devices up in these Fiber Rings, so. So overall, we pretty much have SOP fiber connections. We have Fortinet switches. We have high-end switches that are managed that actual talk on these fiber cables. And the beautiful part of this Fiber Ring is, it is a ring. So if one gets shut down, if somebody cuts a cable on one side by the fire department, it'll run around the other side, so we won't lose connectivity. We have CAT 6 cable in most locations with maybe some CAT 5 running around somewhere on the campus. We utilize 48 firewalls, good high-end firewalls. We do applications for virus scanning, intrusion detection, packet inspection. We write firewall policies to control all the access to and from the network. We have a LAN controller that manage all the campus access points. And everything is up to date. So all our firewalls, access points are all up to date with current firmware and patches. Our file server structure, we run all HP Proline equipment. We run Server 2016 and HyperV virtualized environments. We have already done our power supplies, RAID structures with hot spare disks. We have multiple virtual servers with backup and active directory controllers. We have a virtual data server. Everything patched up and current. Our switches are all managed, power vethernet switches with fiber transceivers, all good high-end Fortinet switches. They good QoS for phone quality, and they're all rack mounted in locations with battery backups. All of our workstations are current Windows 10, Windows 11, all patched up and solid. Kiosser is our main printer here, and we use that for printing, scanning, and all email features. There's a few printers scattered out in other departments. From a Wi-Fi standpoint, we use all Fortinet access points, so we have campus-wide IDs for that unified Wi-Fi solution. Our guest network is not connected to our network, so we don't allow any guest network to look at our main network. From an application standpoint, we pretty much use the Office 365 product suite. We use Mannion accounting software and miscellaneous software packages. We did implement a new phone system recently from Metronet using Polycom phones. That's all cloud-based PBXs, which is pretty nice. Recently, we put in a camera system. We have 16 cameras running around city hall, wastewater, the water treatment over at fire. So basically, this Fiber Ring we put in allows us to see all the cameras from one NVR location here. So basically, everything is centralized at city hall, and then we can basically spoke out from there. Door access control, we have door access controllers at city hall, fire department, and public works. And we have software in here that Janelle and everybody can use, and same with Andy, the fire chief, who program the door access security. Email system, we utilize Office 365 emails. We use multi-factor authentication for all global administrators like myself and Nick. But one of our new policies, we're currently forcing MFA on all the citywide accounts for email security. And it's something that Microsoft is doing. It's what we're doing to most of our clients. So we're making sure that everybody has multi-factor authentication and approval on your cell phones before you get your email accounts. We do have an outdoor sign. We maintain that over at Courtress Bank. From a physical security standpoint, everything's locked in a cage. So we have a secure storage area. We have a secure cage that contains all our door controllers, all our firewalls and switches. Other people that have access would be Carver Link employees who manage all the fiber. So in a sense, a lot of our good stuff is all locked up behind lock-in keys. Public Works has door access control for the security. Wastewater and Water Plant only have keyed doors, which we talked about. It wasn't making sense to put door access controllers there, and the fire department has a nice control system as well. From a remote access side, what I do myself in order to support everybody on a current basis and a timely basis, I utilize ConnectY Screen Connect software. So I can dial in anywhere in the world with my phone and my authentication and come in remotely and support people. And I have to all put the codes on my phone in order to get in there, and that gets locked down. And then we also have the city staff allowing on snow days and other times when they need to connect remotely, that we have licenses for them, and they use all multi-factor as well. So I think overall, when we look at that whole network diagram, Nick, when we go back, that ring, that's where you can kind of see all the different departments, how they interreact. And when they have one access to the internet, one firewall, one policy, one fiber hub, and that actually helps control with the Fiber Ring. So when I look back at this, is this is a pretty secure network? I think so. I think we have enough redundancy built in. I think we got enough security in. Are there always ways to improve? Probably. But for a city this size, I think our network is really, really solid, really solid. And the Fiber Ring has really done well for our door access control, our camera systems, our centralized data storage, our campus-wide wireless system. So I think we have a pretty decent system out there. Does anybody have any questions at all on the overall now substantial network?
Thank you.
It was like, Christian was nodding his head, so I took that as a positive, like, that Jimmy wasn't talking total Chinese.
I'm just not.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for all your work in the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
For everything you've done. Nick, do you want to come to us a little bit about the relationship with Brad and how that works?
All right, sorry. A little further on that?
Just the relationship on how it is. It's not an onsite IT person that's here all the time. It's more contract.
Yep.
If you want to just touch on that?
Yep. So Jimmy does fantastic work for us. He's a time and materials man, as I like to call him. When we have things we want him to do, we give him a call. He takes care of it. If we have special projects, we'll do it. I guess on a basic level, he will make sure to check, he'll check to make sure that firmware, software up to date, and it'll help us with doing that. But he does not provide necessarily a level of service package that he's going to be, you know, checking email logins or penetration testing, or a lot of the other services that you would necessarily get from like an entire IT firm. There's not like weekly, monthly, that type of stuff.
Just want to make it clear he's out full-time.
Well, and Nick makes a good point. There's a lot of network companies out there that will actually go on contract, and they'll say, okay, we're going to do this much this week, this much that week, and then it's going to be a plus, plus, plus. They'll charge you extra workstation, extra server, extra virtual server, extra whatever. So your number gets to be pretty voluminous, and especially on a city budget, it can hammer it pretty bad. I ran $40 million medical companies, 24/7, 300-plus employees by myself. So I know what it takes to run big companies as well as the little companies. But big companies have budgets. Little companies don't always have big budgets. So for the smaller guy, I'm a handshake guy. Is that good or bad? I think it's good on the budget side, but I'm always there and always available in case of crisis or emergency, and I think they know 24/7. If it's Sunday morning, they know they can call me.
Yep.
So, and that's just why I've always been accessible, and I'm a small business guy. And if somebody wanted to go in the network business in contract with a larger firm, just open the wallet because it's going to be pretty expensive.
I just want to make it clear on the relationship that it wasn't a full-time onsite.
Yeah.
Person, obviously does everything we need and above and beyond, and recommendations if we should be upgrading, and always keeping his finger on the pulse as technology advances and would recommend things, but it's just not always there monitoring it and 24/7.
Correct.
Hired by the city. He's there 24/7 if needed, but.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. And what I think is good about this city council in this city is that you've always been tuned to making decisions and upgrading things like door access controllers and fire departments and just X points. Whatever we need, you've basically went out there and said, yeah, we could use security, we could use camera systems. So when I started in 2019 from a little network storage device sitting on Janelle's desk, you know, that could have walked away, you know, anytime you want. And I didn't even bring the backups in here. I mean, we do backups online. We do backup with iDrive. We do shadow copies. We do local disk drives. We do cloud. We do numbers of things to help protect the data, and even on the client station to back up that in the evening, their local workstation's case in crisis mode. Hard drives fail, people get hacked. It's just a fact of life. So, and it's a tough environment we're in right now. There's a lot of things going on for business email compromises, social engineering. It's a challenging environment. I look at myself today, I had three phishing schemes. I had two yesterday. This is on my own personal email account. Can I identify those myself? Yeah, very easily. Can some of my clients? No, it's not easy. And I deal with this on a weekly basis. It's on a daily basis. The best part about it is most of my customers are trained. Jimmy, what do you think about this? They send me a picture, a text, an email. So they say, what do you think about this? So that's what I really like. And I'm not saying those are always chargeable events, but at least it's somebody out there letting me know that, hey, can you help me on this before I make a mistake? So that's kind of nice. So part of it's, you know, letting the client make sure they have a little confidence in you, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, with that, if you want to bring Christian from the League of Minnesota Cities.
Mayor Dodge, members of the council, thank you for having me today. Nick called me and asked me if I could come down and speak to you guys about some of the services that the league can offer the city of mayor. I've obviously gotten up to speed on the incident you guys have experienced, and when I heard about it, my heart sank because just last year in December, I concluded my second term as a city council member myself, so having sat in, you know, your spot, I really feel for you and understand where you're at. I also feel for city staff who, really, I'm sure dealing with this situation wasn't, you know, their best moment, and they're not happy about it either. So, long story short, there's definitely some work to do. If we're looking at the future and what we can do to really help you guys get some assurance to figure out where you're at, we can do what's called a security maturity assessment. And essentially, we take a benchmark of security standards and technical controls, and it'll address many of the things that Jimmy was talking about, and that's good, but it also would expand to include administrative controls as well. And that's where you might have, say, your financial controls and your risk management controls. So we would do this security maturity assessment, figure out where you're at, and the nice thing about it is it might illuminate some gaps in your security program and identify areas for you to focus on in the future. And so the idea would be over time, you know, you can't do everything at once, and certainly I wouldn't recommend trying to bite off more than you can chew, but the point is you take a few things every year. Hey, we're going to try these three things. You know, it sounds like you're going to do MFA automatic for everybody. Awesome. Great start. But the point is, you know, you'll pick two or three things. We're going to try to do that this year, and then we'll reassess where we're at in a year, and we'll measure our progress. And the point of these security maturity benchmarks is that you can track where you're going over time. And in an ideal world, you'll achieve your goals and get to a point where you're at a level of maturity that is probably recommended or up to your level for a city of this size. So the last thing I want to say is, I'm certainly conscious of the fact that technology and security costs money. You could spend the world on information security and still not achieve a perfect system. So being conscious of what's realistic to invest in and what isn't is something that I'm very in touch with, and I want to make sure that we're working with your city staff to figure out really what are going to be the best bangs for your buck to ensure that incidents like this don't happen again. And then I think the last thing I want to say is that, you know, we can do a lot to secure the physical environment, you know, with our firewalls and our switches and our servers are up to date. And I think what we're finding is it's hard to attack a network environment head-on and hack in or compromise out environment. What is easy to do is to convince us as people to make mistakes, right? And so more and more of these attacks are relying on social engineering, and they're relying on us to open the door and let the hackers right in, right? So that's the big challenge. And so as part of a security maturity assessment, I think what we would find is, hey, let's do some additional training. Let's work with staff one-on-one. Let's make sure we implement the correct financial control policies. Let's test them. Let's run through them. And really make sure that we're in practice and comfortable with those things before we move forward.
So are these, like this assessment, is this a service that's provided?
Yeah, absolutely.
Members or?
Yeah, so this is something that I do as part of the league.
Okay.
It's a new service, and what we'll do is we'll come down, we'll meet with city staff. We're going to talk with Jimmy. We're going to go through really just a long list of technical and administrative controls. And the point is, at the end, you're going to rate, you know, how mature are we on each of these items? And we're going to determine which areas might need more attention than others. And those areas that do need more attention, I'll work with Nick and Jimmy to come up with some recommendations for council to consider as far as an action. And then also, at the end of the day, you get to see a chart of like these different domains that says, well, in the inventory controls, we're doing good. In the administrative risk management controls, we're deficient, right? And so you'll see kind of which categories you need help in and which ones you don't, and you can target certain areas to improve over time.
Wonderful. Certainly sounds like something we should be engaging in, yep.
Right.
I believe it's, I think you had, we're alluding to, I believe this is a no charge.
Yeah, well, no charge. It's part of your membership of the league. I don't know that I can do this for every 834 cities in Minnesota, but for cities that need some help, we're here. So, I mean, I think we are developing this position here at the league, and so part of that includes a little bit of experimentation on my part, going to cities and testing things out and seeing what's working for you, what isn't. And so to that extent, doing some security maturity assessments with you and your team is actually helping us develop a program. So it's a win-win for both of us.
Great. I look forward to working with the league on this. I think it's a good partnership. It sounds like a good program, and it sounds like it's a much-needed program.
Yeah, we could, we can use, we would probably benchmark to something like, I don't know if you've ever heard of NIST. It's called the National Institutes of Standards and Technology. But essentially, they set all sorts of standards and benchmarks for the industry. And they specifically have a cybersecurity framework, and that would probably be the go-to recommendation to benchmark against because it's a government-developed standard framework that is widely used in the industry and probably is considered your standard entry-level cybersecurity framework to start with. So for a city who's getting started on their security journey, that would be the right place to start. And then over time, you'll see, you know, where you're at. I would presume year one, you're going to find, wow, we've got a lot of stuff that we want to improve, but that's not uncommon for just about every entity who's first starting their assessment journey, so.
So do we have an initial meeting scheduled? Do we have a timeframe on this?
I've got a clear schedule, and I've told Nick that once you guys figure out what your schedule is, I'm ready to come out and meet with you guys.
Yep. Perfect. Working on that. Good.
Sooner the better.
We need to close up some of the gaps, and this will help us moving forward.
Yeah, it's a structured approach to addressing cybersecurity, and, you know, I feel like, you know, it would give you guys some assurance as council members that you're tackling the right things at the right time.
Wonderful. I look forward to it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something to expand a little bit on that, too, and I know me and Nick have talked a little bit. I'd like some, maybe some-
I'd like some, maybe some consideration from council. Yeah, maybe approval at a future meeting. I'd like to look at maybe bringing in a third party to do some. So some of this with the league is looking forward. I want to look at this this instance that happened and see if there's what hap, you know, just from a third party assessing it and getting a report on were policies followed correctly, did things done appropriately? And so we can close that loop for our residents and give them reassurance that, hey, that this could not have been avoided or however that assessment turns out. But I don't think, because it's the, you know, with our administrator and the clerk here, we don't really have anyone internally who can do it and be objective. So I think we should consider getting a third party somewhere. Someone should be able to come in with some knowledge and be able to look at our systems. Were our policies followed correctly? Did we do everything we were supposed to do? I think we owe that to our residents to close that loop also. So I'd appreciate people to consider that and we'll talk when probably it'll have to come to another council member, obviously, for approval, but I think it's something.
And maybe the league can recommend somebody.
Yeah, we can work with the league, certainly.
But maybe they have a good recommendation or something like that.
I did. I did touch base. I did call David Drown and Associates to see if they do this kind of work. I talked to them a couple of days ago. His, they do not. His recommendation was talk to our city attorney and the league to see if something like that is available.
Yeah, I will certainly look into that specific use case in terms of a third-party consulting resource on that matter. I will say, I don't have all the details of your particular incident. I haven't looked at all the forensics and all the logs. But what I can say from what I've seen of of the claim information is that what you experienced is a fairly typical pattern for what we call fraudulent instruction. And this is not the first time it's happened to a Minnesota city and it's not going to be the last. And so in circumstances for fraudulent instruction, what we usually see is that either an individual internal to the entity that has lost the funds or the partner, the vendor that they're working with was compromised. I can't say what happened in this circumstance, but, you know, the challenge is, is that if you don't have two-factor authentication enabled on all of your accounts, if one of them is compromised, you know, the malicious actors can loiter and mill around and hang around in your network for, you know, weeks or months even before they find a transaction that's in flight that they want to attempt to intercept. And from there, once they do, they, what they do is they try to copy, say, the invoice or the, you know, the the bill, whatever format it's in. And they're going to re-present it back to you in a in a format that is asking you to change the ACH payment information. And well, if you follow through with that and accidentally mistake the fraudulent instruction for for something coming from a legitimate source, then you'll find yourself in a situation where you have lost your funds.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
And and just one more. We're obviously staying away from the criminal side. We have the, we're calling sheriffs. We're working on that. This would just be for the internal policy and just that to wrap that up. So thank you. Thank you both. I appreciate it. All right, Nick, if you want to go into the financial impact side of it.
So on the financial impact side of it, the total exact loss on it is $430,177.50. And talking with the league, their insurance coverage would cover $50,000 of that. So that leaves a net of $380,177.50. And we have a handful of options, and this is what I want to get council's input on as we start to look at this. And this will bleed over into the conversation about the splash pad as well. But to focus on this specifically, I'll go up here and just make that a little bit bigger. So there we have the sources. So this is where the potential funds could come from. I have placeholder numbers in here just to start as beginners. These can be adjusted. Well, the league's one can't, but the rest of them can be adjusted. I also have columns for use. That's the use of the funds for the financial impact. We have the current fund balance in there. So that's the current fund balance as of, I think it was last week. The ending fund balance, the ending fund balance represents the current minus the source. And then you had the project, you have the projected year-end fund balance. So this is what the fund balance is predicted to look like at the end of the year. So four sources of funding that I had been looking at and focusing on. The Fund 350, which is our 2015 A bond fund, Fund 435, which is a capital improvements fund. My understanding of this one is if there's revenues over expenditures in a year and we have met our fund balance goals and those reserves are in a good spot, then that additional amount is then transferred to this fund. Fund 620 is our water fund and then Fund 640 is our sewer fund. The outlier on there you probably see is Fund 350. Why is it a bond fund up there and why is it being considered? When I got here, I believe council recalls, Derek, I don't think you were here at the time, but the rest of you may recall, I had dug into some things because I saw some fund balances were a little odd. Plus, we were looking at levying for the 2014 A bond and that didn't seem quite right to me. So worked with our auditors and we figured out the 2014 A1 and we didn't have to levy for that. The water fund had just owed the general fund money, so we got that corrected and that has been settled out. The second one that we had looked at was Fund 350, which is our 2015 A bond. And this was a combination of some street improvement and a fire equipment purchase in one bond. And I was looking at this back in November, October, November, and I noticed it had too much money in it in that the fund balance was higher than it needed to be at that point in time. And so worked with the auditors on that. And the conclusion we came to is when the bond was originally issued, instead of just the two items that are currently a part of it, there was a third that was being considered. And at the last moment, that third one was pulled out. But for a handful of years, the city levied like it was still in there. So there were levying on a higher bond or a higher repayment schedule. It was caught and then it was adjusted. But there was still this surplus of revenues over expenditures that was in there, and that's just been sitting in this bond fund. This, the this money doesn't have a purpose. It was a mistake in over-levying that has since been corrected, but it's just sitting in that account with no real purpose to go towards it. So with that having no real purpose, and this was when I was holding this in the source of funding, because I, as we're getting more into the long-term planning and what have you, I wanted to make sure that could be a part of the puzzle if we needed to adjust some things. But given we have this event right now, I would make the recommendation that we move $120,000 out of that fund and then place it towards the fraud loss in there. You can see the remaining balance is $6,700 and that's because we need to, we have another interest payment coming up in July, August. August, we have an interest payment and that will make sure there's enough money in there to cover the interest payment as part of that. Fund 435, historically, this has kind of been a miscellaneous go-to category. It's currently got a $407,000 in it. Items that it came out of here is like back in 2014, a replacement for a public works truck. The carpet you guys did before I got here, the paint on the walls. That came out of there. The rooftop units for the community center are coming out of there. The snow equipment that was purchased when you guys went to in-house versus contracted, that came out of there. So it's kind of been here and there type of stuff as it's arisen. So I don't have any future plans to use much of that money going forward. So most of that 407,000 is available for use. If we scroll down just a little bit, take a look at just a brief analysis. So again, we have the balance sitting here.
Real quick.
Yes.
So you don't have any immediate needs for that or anything coming out of that because of how we're doing CIPs and how we're budgeting.
Right.
Properly, not properly, but a little more robustly.
Right.
On that reason.
The city has been doing more in CIP levy raising, so it's been less of a reliance on this. And when we get more long-term planning, we can make sure we're CIPing properly so we don't have to rely on this for in a pinch. One that might come out of here is as we talked about with the Ridgeview, it sounds like Ridgeview likes that center office that we had talked about. I've got the draft contract from them. I got to review that. But they like that center office, but eventually we need to figure out the sheriff's office. And one of the ideas was our, if we get storage cleaned up here and we really consolidate some things, I believe that we can free up a lot of space in that storage area. And we can perhaps look at throwing up drywall, painting, creating an environment in there, an office space environment in there. It'd be about an eight by 12 type of space that you could fit in there and the sheriff's office could potentially go in there. I also think that's a good spot that as we continue to grow as a city, eventually I was already, you know, it's way down the line, but I had envisioned that at some point we would reclaim that room, break room slash additional office. If at some point we get large enough where we need to have a full-time city planner because we have that much activity. I mean, it's way down the road, but I was envisioning reclaiming that space and turning it into a good space. So, you know, you put drop ceiling, lighting, walls, make it look like a proper office. So at this time, I was looking at that for the sheriff's office because I don't have a lot of other good spots to put them once Brad Quas takes over the old fire hall. So if we put an office in now, it can serve into the future. And if we grow to the point where we need to take that back over in the distant future, we can relocate the sheriff's office at that point. So that was a project I was looking at. Still in the conceptual stages. I don't have any cost estimates or anything like that, but that could affect it. But then we look at the 435 fund. So we have your total source here. That's what's remaining on the community center rooftop units that have to get put on there. So that's the remaining amount that's going to come out of there for sure. And then you come down to approximate fraud loss, and this is from above. And then this is where it gets to tie in with splash pad because I was looking at this fund to help fund the gap in the splash pad. If that's something that city council really does want to pursue, if we're going to execute a grant application, we'll come back to that. But if you look at some of these figures, even after all of that's taken out, you're still looking at 122,000. If these are the, if these are ones that fold and we can play with these spreadsheets. Take a look at them. But you get looking up in here. So you got the 120 out of there, 110,000 out of that 435 and then 150 out of water because some of these bond payments, the water has contributed to as part of what was lost with the fraud. Water was contributing to some of them. So water is an eligible resource that we can draw from. Currently at about 109, or I'm sorry, $905,000 in it. And this was also some stuff that I was going to do in a future workshop when we talked long-term planning is what does a correct fund balance mean? We have a 905,000, but is that good? Is that bad? Is it way too little? Is it, I mean, where does it sit in the grand scheme of things? And the rule I've gone by in talking with past financial firms is that for you to, so for the general fund, you generally want to have more than 50% of your expenditures as fund balance for your current year. So whatever the general fund has, if it's a million dollars, you want 500,000 or better as your bare minimum. I like to ride in that 75-ish just in case things come up type of things. You're not pinched too hard. But when it comes to utility funds, the bare, the bare bare minimum you want to have in there is three months worth. And so for reference, the water fund has about $550,000 of expenditures a year. So you typically want to have about three months worth of expenditures at the absolute bare minimum. Healthy would be six months. And if you're nine to 12 months worth of expenditures, then you're really healthy. So if the water fund has about, the water fund has about 550 at it. We're at 905. We're almost at 200%. So it's, it's in a really good spot. Kyle and I have discussed internally about what long-term looks for water fund. And we don't have a lot of major projects coming down the pike. The water treatment plant was refurbished back in 2020 along with the water tower. So the major components are in place. And even if we had to do something like sink a well, you're talking 100 to 200,000, which could easily come out of this fund and you'd still be sitting north of that 100% range for the fund balance. So targeted this, this year, the the water fund is looking at about 80 to 90,000, I would say, in revenues over expenditures. So you can see current fund balance at 905. If you were to take the 150 out, it brings it to 755, but then projected year-end balance with the revenues that we're expecting to make, brings it back to 835. So the water fund sits in a very healthy position. The sewer fund debated back and forth, but when you think about the upcoming water wastewater treatment facility project that's coming down the road, we're going to be using a lot of that money to buy down what we have to bond for. So we want to bond as little as possible. Maintaining a good fund balance, you don't want to drain the thing dry, mind you, but bring it down to appropriate levels. Hopefully get a grant, use this to buffer the rest and then you bond for the remainder. So with that coming down, like in the water fund, we don't have any of these projects for several years that we're looking at. Water, our sewer fund, it's come a little bit closer. So these were the figures that I played with. And that's what we're looking at here for as, for financial impact on that. Any questions, comments, observations?
So the water fund continues to have revenues greater than expenditures. Does that mean we're charging too much money for water?
Utility funds are meant to have revenues over expenditures. Your general fund is supposed to break even. That means you're not taxing more than you need to. Utility funds typically run in that 5 to 10% revenues over expenditures.
What we are, right? If you said we're going to have about 85,000.
Well, if, about 80 to 80 to 90, depending on how expenses land, of course. But you base that off of your expenditure. So if we got about 550 expenditures, 10% would be a little 50, 55,000. So I think there, you know, as we look long-term, I think there is room to tweak that down. Even dip into a little here. We'll give a little glance into the future. We've looked at this spreadsheet before, but just to relook at it again. So you've seen this before. I brought this up before. This is the water fund specific. So we only have debt, two debt services with the water fund. It's the 2006 PFA and the 2020 PFA loans. And PFA stands for Public Facilities Authority, the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. And they do very low-interest loans to public entities for water and wastewater type of projects. So our 2006, our final payment will be in 2026. And then you see a significant drop in the debt we have. And we don't have any future debt that we see at that point coming on. And it may be a while before any future debt does come on. So in the short term, as this starts to drop off, we see a gap here, another little small bond dropped off here. So that brought us, that'll bring us down in 2024. And we're going to definitely take a look at this as how can we then lower the fees? You know, make that margin that 5 to 10% that utilities normally do, but we don't want to charge any more than we absolutely have to, of course. So when we get to 2027 here, I think that opens up a very large possibility of even dropping utility rates even more in that. But by the time that rolls around, as you could see from, now we get to this, the water fund will have, of course, recovered in full by that point. But that was one thing that we were going to look at here later in the year is utility rate study type of stuff. That's something you guys wanted me to nail down. It's on my calendar to do, make sure that things are where they need to be and rates aren't, we're making sure we're charging enough to cover what we need to, but not overcharging and making sure we look to that future to ensure that that's in line.
And of course, with the new hire, we'll be able to take a much deeper dive into a lot of this, too.
Yep. That'll be helpful.
Can you scroll down again, please? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yep.
And so you think in the 435, having 120,000 at the end of this is sufficient?
Yeah, just because there's no, there's no planned expenditures to come out of it, other than maybe the the office buildup, but that's not going to be a major, major expense. Our public works guys could do the framing and throw up the drywall. I know they have the skill set to do it. So that would save, but future planning from this?
That one gives me a little heartburn getting that low on it.
Well, splash pad's only tentative.
Yeah, that'll factor into the next conversation.
Yep.
Does it make sense on the water? Because it's so healthy to even factor in that extra 80 that we're thinking we're going to have for this year and put that into it also and reduce one of the other ones?
That's what I was wondering, like.
Then our ending balance would be 755 or projected at 755, 835. Does that make some sense?
Got it. So you're talking. Got it. So you're talking seventy on.
Because the seven fifty-five, even you're saying.
Leaving more in the capital, is that what you're saying?
Then that's still, that's still a healthy balance on there based on the conversation.
So yeah, so you're well north of a, you're well north of twelve months.
Yeah, yeah.
At that, at the end of the year. So if you would be talking that, then you're uh, you're at seven fifty-five here, which was what you were looking at, um, ending fund balance prior. So you're still doing well in that. So that means.
Twenty thousand.
And that was more than that. That was eighty. So. Yeah. Well, hold on. Let me do numbers correctly here. Sorry. There.
And then can you scroll down? Does that update that?
Thirty-one seventy-seven. Yep. So this, this automatically pulls that cell.
Yeah, that would leave us too.
That looks better.
I think that makes some sense to do that because it's so healthy.
And there's no looming projects.
Right.
And again, we're going to drop off. Our debt in the next few years.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty twenty-four, a small bond drops off and then twenty twenty-seven, a bigger one?
Yep. So we got a little bit of drop off here. Uh, let's see, two increments of twenty-five thousand?
Yeah. Million down to seventy-five thousand.
Big change.
A little less than seventy-five.
And is there any slim, small chance of recovering any of the funds?
So um.
I suppose there's always a chance.
There's a chance. Um, Carver County is working on it. I did receive today, actually, I got in touch with an additional resource. Um, from another city that a couple of years ago, they experienced almost an exact same thing. And one of their detectives on their department. Works with Homeland Security in their fraud division. And they were able to, uh, so their, their total loss was one point two million. And through his work, he said they were, did some good work and they were able to find accounts and lock down money and they're hoping to get about eight hundred thousand of it back.
But did you say that happened like two years ago and they're still hoping?
Yes. So they don't have the money yet.
So I mean.
Right. It's not, nothing going to be instant.
If it did in a couple of years, it'd just redistribute it back into where it needs to go.
Right. But I've connected that resource with Carver County so that if they need that additional expertise, they can certainly rely on it.
And at some point, I think we should talk about. Maybe upping what we have for insurance for the league of cities.
Yeah, is that something, I mean, I agree with that.
For something like this, obviously.
That'll come with.
Where's that standard?
The assessments are done and um. A, a, and maybe new policies will be set that we do a certain amount. We only do certain or do them separate. So maybe the fifty is appropriate, you know, so some of that'll come with the policy stuff too. You know, but definitely we have to look at that. I'm not sure yet if that's just a flat fee that it's fifty thousand for everyone.
Yeah. So your um, standard coverage is actually two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, there is a sub limit for fraudulent instruction, which is what is covered. In, as I understand it, the particular case that you're dealing with right now. So uh, as far as I know, the league has no plans to raise that particular supplement. And in fact, it was just instituted. In uh, November of twenty twenty-one and all renewals that have occurred since then are now on that schedule. So um, I would suspect that through the league, you would not find uh, interest to increase coverage for fraudulent instruction claims.
That's it. I can mirror that in my discussions with underwriters for the league. They had mentioned, well, we can take a look at it in our next renewal period, but they weren't sure for those reasons. Our insurance agent, Chris Bullis, he said that if you wanted to go above and beyond, you could find outside coverage. To go above and beyond that.
Or set our policies based on that number.
Yeah.
What we think is appropriate for it, I suppose.
Yep.
And we as a city don't have any outside resource fraud insurance besides the league?
Yeah, just league.
I mean, should we explore it at least to see what like, what kind of numbers we're talking about for coverage out, external coverage?
As the city grows, people are going to be more apt to.
I mean, I get what you're saying with the policies, you know, when we were. Yeah.
And.
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
So I can tell you all the other cities I've worked for, they've never had additional.
Really? It is going to be a challenge to find a insurer who is willing to insure you more of this type of coverage.
Yeah, very expensive.
Quite a challenge. However, uh, if you go through a security insurance assessment process, this is the type of information they're going to want to see from you in, in, in order to gain coverage in the first place. So. I mean, long story short, at least starting with a maturity assessment, you at least put yourself on a path to avail yourself of potential coverage options. Uh, I can speak for price, but from what I've seen in the marketplace, this type of insurance coverage is expensive.
I was gonna say, I think, right, my company has been victim to fraud as well, and I think we pay like one point two million in insurance. So I, I mean, we're losing money at that point.
Money more well spent on security and upgrades than anything else.
Yeah. But I do think, right, Nick, didn't you say this was like four bond payments lumped into one?
Yes, it was four bond payments lumped into one.
So again, if we had made four separate payments at a fifty thousand dollars, we could have been. A little bit more appropriately covered, I think is.
Because they would have been separate.
Okay. So what mattered?
I thought it was per instance.
So when we look at the policy or going over the policies of what we're going to. Do for situations like this. We'll set the limits based off of. That accordingly. Is that what you guys all had in mind?
Well, I would think.
Yeah. And, right, like.
That's a dollar for dollar or not, you know, or something like that. A hundred thousand, you know, at what point do you balance that or? But no, well, yeah, we're going to have to sit down and look at that. Some of that'll come from the assessments we're getting and, and all the, everything that we got to gather.
Nick, did you mention there was a, a policy you were gonna, or some kind of reference or?
Yeah, the league had a model electronic funds transfer policy and I was looking at that, but that was before I got in contact with Christian and now we're looking at more of the comprehensive approach. The policy and.
And I will certainly recommend continuing to look at implementing uh, that policy.
Yep.
It'll fit for you guys, but of course, um, as a template policy, they're bringing it to the justice and mark up as used to fit. So the key part of the template policy is that it includes. Required financial control verification check for any changes to ECH payment information. So you're supposed to have uh, positive confirmation from whomever is allegedly requesting to change payment information. And you would do that by picking up the phone call, picking up the phone, making phone calls and using a predefined known good number as opposed to say. Replanted email or using the phone number that's in the, right? I would have planned to go a place where you know, uh, you have good contact information. And then you would have a secondary approval so there doesn't need to be uh, two eyes on it as opposed to just one.
Yeah.
And that, that policy, if it's implemented and followed correctly, would address a lot of this concern. And of course, as people, I mean, busy, busy workdays and Friday rolls around and you have a bunch of payments to get out, I mean, it. It becomes hard to follow your policies to the teeth. So um, having some uh. Understanding that even though we might lay the best laid plans, sometimes things still go wrong.
Right.
Yeah, and I guess, right, like. Working with Christian and the league seems more like a long-term plan, but what are we doing in the interim? Right, like what's happening right now? Right, like, you know?
That'll be even so fresh in your staff's mind, but sure, this is one of those circumstances where it's, you know, whom we want, shame on you, whom we find, shame on me. I don't think anyone who works here for the city is going to let this uh, incident uh, fall from, you know, the front of the mind anytime soon. And so if you implement this policy, start following it, that would be probably the, the best first step in addition to.
Multi, yeah. Which is all done with staff already. It's just not on ours, right? If, that's just not implemented on, on council computers, correct? Yep, but all staff is done. Yep. Oh, yep, yep. Yep, perfect. So I'll have that policy ready to go for consideration at the next council meeting. Since it's a policy template, all I have to do is tweak some things, fill in city of mayor, and a lot of that should stand on its own. So we shouldn't even need to take that to a. A work session to review a type of thing.
And very common. We use their templates a lot. A lot of our policies come from the league's templates.
Yep.
Or other communities that have come from the leagues, so.
I think it's going to be a long year of learning, growing and securing. How we do things.
So how, um, these fun, uh, what are thoughts are? Are we good with what we're, what he's proposing? With that change?
I feel better with the two oh two. I agree with Mike, you know, the ending balance there in the four thirty-five fund. And there again, the splash pad's only a maybe. So.
Right.
If we get the grant.
Yeah, yeah. The grant is a requirement.
Yeah. Yeah.
So to even consider it.
And that grant you said is going out, you have it ready and going out this, by the end of this month?
That'll be a next discussion. Now let's, first let's make sure we're set on these. And anything more on the security, cybersecurity or anything like that? And then we'll talk to DNR grant after that. I think it looks better.
I like this better than a little bit more.
And we're sure on that fund three fifty, that the sixty-seven thirty-one, that's, that's appropriate.
Yep. Yep. I made sure I triple-checked my dates and figures.
Good.
Even if you made that a hundred thousand and took fifty out of the four thirty-five just to be safe, you know, it could go that way too.
Sixty-seven is actually more than we need in there.
Good.
So I, I wanted to estimate high on that one, even though I know the bond payment amount, I just.
Yep.
Sure.
Yeah.
And if there's a little bit left over, you know, that can be fun transferred away at a future date once everything's out.
And did you have plans for that? A hundred and twenty thousand? Had you started noodling around what you were going to do with that? Any, I mean, what was going to happen? Okay.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Again, what, what was the ending balance on the six, sixty-seven hundred? And is that a recurring thing? Is there going to be?
So how that bond fund works is um, there's a, an interest payment coming up in. Well, we can actually look. I have the interest payment on our debt spreadsheet. So we're going to go that two thousand and fifteen A bond. Blow this up a little bit so everybody can read. And um. Two thousand and twenty-three, so it's going to be on half, half of that. Because we've already made the first interest. So it's half of that figure. Uh, so forty-one sixty, forty-one fifty. Six in there. So that's how much is going to come out on July because we've already made the first, we've already made the hundred and five principal. And then we've also paid half of the interest. So the next payment is just the other half of the interest and that's it. Now, how does that fund get replenished? We will get our first half of the taxes. And that we levy each year for the bond amount. And so. Part of this is paid, um, this part is not correct, but part of this is paid by the improvement portion. Then we have uh, a general levy portion. And if we get over to. The equipment portion. This right here, so. Here, this is the levy year, this is the collect year, and this is the pay year. So collecting twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, so we've made our twenty-three payments. So right now we're collecting year twenty twenty-three for the payment coming up in twenty-four. Since the majority of it comes out in February. So now we're replenishing the fund. Now for the payment in twenty twenty-four. So we will get, so the net levy we have in there that we levy for, and this was part of our levy that we passed in December was for this forty-four thousand, two thirty-one, twenty-five. So we'll get forty-four thousand, two thirty-one, twenty-five into our fund this year, and then on February, we make a payment. So that fund will replenish itself in time for the next payment.
Forty-four thousand, how are we going to make a hundred and five thousand dollar payment?
Uh, there's an improvement portion that comes from special assessment.
Okay.
Yep.
There's more, okay.
Yep.
That's three categories, wasn't it?
Yeah, then there was a water portion in there too. That takes part of it. So one is we get special assessments. Um, those we don't levy for, those are already specially assessed. And those will come in and we get the water portion that comes in and what we need to levy is that forty-four as part of taxes.
Got it.
So that's, I think, uh, we have direction on the. Okay.
All right, DNR grant splash pad, trail reconstruction.
All right, this one, I'm going to switch up spreadsheets here. So in here, this is what our grant application currently has in it. Um, like you mentioned, Derek, uh, on Friday. I submitted the preliminary draft. If you submitted it on Friday, the DNR will give it a look and they will give us feedback on the grant application. The real deadline is at the end of the month on the thirty-first. So if we're looking at the timelines with this, this is where we're reviewing it tonight because on the twenty-seventh, the second council meeting, we need to pass a, if we're going to move forward with the splash pad and the grant application. We need to pass a resolution that authorizes the submission of the grant. I can't submit a grant on my own. It has to be by resolution by the city council. Given the deadline is the thirty-first and the twenty-second is our last meeting. That's why we're talking about this right now in conjunction with fraud. So that we can be sure or be sure we want to do it or push it to another year or whatever council feels is the appropriate action for that. So when we look at the use of the funds, the cost of the splash pad itself, limestone block seating, um, canopy over one of the areas, some signage that's going to be required as part of the grant. Then we have the uh, uh, the trail rehab and the two sections. Uh, the ADA section that goes from the Wiener Shack up to the pavilion itself. And then the south fork.
It's so sad to know what it's called.
You didn't think I was going to use proper terminology on that one, did you? And then we got the south fork, and this is where it branches south off of what I'll call the main line and then goes down to um. Oh, what's the subdivision name? I remember Wiener Shack, but not the subdivision.
Coldwater?
No, um, Sunset.
Oh.
Sunset. Yep, Sunset Meadows. That would get redone. Uh, both sections brought up to ADA accessibility standards. The grant says you have to have things in your, if you're getting this four-part project, things in the park have to be ADA accessible. So um. We were planning on doing these sections anyway at some point, so. Put them in the grant, hopefully get half of, uh, half of the money paid for by the grant, if we're going to put the money into it anyway. Then we get to our use sections. So that is half of the total project cost. That's what we would be going for as part of the grant. The max you can get is three fifty. So we're not, uh, we're still within the bounds of that. This uh, so this would then need to be a, nope, that doesn't need to be adjusted. Um, park fund, when we take a look at this, now this number. We pull from down here, again, another look at the fund, current balance that's sitting in there is four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we have three hundred and seventy-five left on the pavilion, barring the fire. Um, we have four thousand dollars left in architectural and engineering fees on that. There was, in talking with Kyle, council said that there was twelve thousand to purchase picnic tables. For that, uh, eight to ten of those, and they're at about twelve hundred apiece for picnic tables. And then also including in there, uh, the two thousand and twenty. And then also including in there, uh, the 2023 park CIP amount of 50,000, and then also the 2024 park CIP in there as well, to round out the 164807. And then the difference what's left over is the 134, 465, and that's where I've been looking at, if we're gonna do this, where would you get the remainder of that? And that's where I was looking at that 435 fund, since it's not a regularly dipped into fund.
So the park fund would be completely, absolutely zero?
Through 2024. It would be, uh, totally used.
How do you?
And what?
It says it's gonna have a balance of 165,000.
Yeah, but that, that's what's going up there to be used.
Right up here? That's, then it's all being used up in here. So this number goes up into this as part of the source to come up with a 598.
Okay.
So yeah, it utilizes the whole thing through 2024 in order to get it done.
And like, what has our expenditures been the, like, previous, maybe two, three years?
So.
What we're spending out on the parks?
So parks, so park CIP and parks operations are two different budgets. In the general fund, we have a parks budget, that's where we budget for things like electrical utilities. The public works wages get paid out of there for mowing and taking care of it, um, maintenance and repairs come out of that. CIP is for new equipment, new stuff that you're gonna do, if you're gonna be putting in a, um, oh gosh, what were they talking, because we were, we're talking about, um, park priority projects at one of the board meetings, I'm blanking at the, uh.
Like an archery range?
Archery range, if they wanna put that in, if they wanna put a gazebo in, dog park, those are things that come out of the CIP.
Those aren't hundreds of thousands of dollars either. I'd rather see this project move forward, being the pavilion is being built to house the pumps and the everything already, it would be nice to see that move forward first, I guess, in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
And if you choose to go forward with the grant, I mean, you have to be committed to doing the project if you get the grant. We can't turn it back, the DNR does not like that at all, if they award and you say, eh, no, we don't need the money.
Is it a potential that we could only get 100,000 from?
Nope, it's all or none.
It's either 50% or nothing.
Yes, it's whatever you apply for or none. On the reason for that, it's a ver, it's a very competitive grant program, and they don't want to, say, dilute, because if everybody's asking for half, they don't wanna dilute it down to like, well, you only get 10%, and then nobody's able to do their projects.
And so, what is the timeframe that we have to use those funds?
Until 2025.
Okay, so with the fire, and if we get delayed for some reason, we're still okay?
If we execute the project with the contracts this year, if we say, well, we're gonna wait till next year to do this splash pad project, the cost of the splash pad is gonna go up by one year's worth. Whatever in, because the splash pad today is not going to be the same splash pad that we agreed to next year. The cost of things.
We'd have to order and pay for it.
We don't necessarily have to pay for it immediately, but we have to have it under contract, sign, this is the price that we're getting, because if we don't sign it in, well, if you try to say, well, we want 2023's pricing in 2024, they're gonna, no. Price goes up, and you've already locked it into the grant.
I guess I'd feel comfortable, I mean, looking at our parks, we've done a great job keeping them updated and safe and inspected and new equipment, ADA compliance, I mean, I, I don't like draining it, but.
And I think, right, was it the Mayor Rising Community Festival when the parks had their little boards with, you know,
Yeah.
pictures and all of that, I mean, I think that was well received and.
I think that's well received, for sure.
You know.
I can tell you my opinion, and I've talked to Nick a little bit about it. I personally, I'm on the side of, we need to pump the brakes and take a year and, and get a handle on this, this is, that's where I sit. We don't know yet where we're at, even with the fire and what's gonna happen with that, we don't know. I, I mean, just from being down 380,000 dollars that we're trying to manage through right now, and then continuing to move forward on the projects where we do have some latitude to wait, because they're not in motion yet, I'm struggling with it. I just can't get my head wrapped around that 380,000 dollar loss, and we're not pumping our brakes somewhere or relooking at it and reassessing things, and we're moving forward. That is, that's just where I stand on it, I'd prefer to wait a year, um. We don't know how things are gonna get delayed, we don't even know the structure of that building yet, I mean, where it's at. Now, I don't think it was a super big fire, a real hot fire, so I don't think the steel rough it needs to be, I don't know, but that's just my thought, it'll be for me to sway to not delay it a year. And if it's running down to zero again, I don't like that either. The pavilion already costs more than what we anticipated. I was kinda, to be honest, I was kind of on that side of it even before the, the, the loss, that it was like, wow, that, that was a lot more than we expected. We might have to take an extra year, but it's just my opinion.
Yes, and I'm more on the side of it's gonna cost us more, plus as long as we get the contract done, doesn't mean we have to pay for it right away, and we're already gonna be a year out, so construction will probably be 2024. I, or do you think they can get it in 2023?
The pavilion's done, assuming the pavilion's, and I will find out as soon as I can from the structural engineer exactly what needs to get done. Because I know that's tied to this, because if we're talking, well, the pavilion's gonna take another eight months to complete.
Then we obviously can't do it, but then I don't wanna say go ahead and submit the grant, how?
Right.
We only have till the end of the month. You've already submitted the preliminary. At least we should, we should have some sort of idea by the next council meeting on what timeframe we're looking at to reconstruct the pavilion, I would sure think. We would have adjusters and claims and so on and so forth. So we should have a better idea by then, I say we table it and discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we still have time to discuss.
Right.
It's got, come up the last council meeting for approval on it.
Yeah, right, we got one more council meeting to give it the go, go once over, but I just wanna make sure to.
Get some of that information, but I.
Right.
My experience is working with insurance companies, I don't know how fast that's gonna.
Right.
Move either, um, you know, for everything that has to get done.
Yeah, I s.
Now, maybe it's different in this industry and insurance is different than, but I know homeowners who they're fighting with them for over a year, trying to figure stuff out, who's paying what, but but again, two weeks, maybe we'll have a lot more information, and then, and then that changes.
I think that's what we go by, that, that's the only real way we're gonna be able to make a logical decision. I- i- if we don't have a clear answer, we can't submit the grant, and we're gonna have to delay.
And even their feedback, they may come back and say, oh, no, dude, this, update this, I mean, if it's 49 bullet points of things that need to be improved.
Absolutely.
That might be a telltale right there on things. Not that that's the case, don't get me wrong, but, um, it'll be interesting what their feedback is.
Yeah, I'd say that.
Yeah, I'm not saying today, I'm a, I mean, I have more information, well, it's what I need, but.
Yeah, that's what I caution is.
But I'm still wrapping my hat, I still struggle with, how do we take a loss like this, and we don't, we don't slow down and, and pump the brakes a bit, that's my only concern.
Right, and I share that, it's like I.
So do I.
I reinforce, you better be able to execute this project, and you better be on board of doing it if we say we're submitting the grant, because if we get it,
Yeah.
the DNR does not like it when they get, money gets turned back, they do not like it at all.
Right.
And we get a lot from the DNR, from other grants, from fire department and the side, but, I mean, we wanna stay on their good side, I'm sure.
Right. Yeah, next meeting, I guess, will really depend what information we have.
See what kind of, as much information as you can get in that two weeks and.
Yeah, I just, I think we should move forward, right, have more information. I struggle with communicating to the residents that the loss is not gonna impact them, and then we don't go forward with the splash pad as a result of the loss.
Right.
Because then, right, that is a direct impact, right? We have been, you know, planning for the pavilion, and to Chad's point, it cost us, I think Dodge said too, it cost us more uh, than we expected, because we just keep delaying it and delaying it and delaying it, so.
Right.
Um, you know, I think, again, we got good feedback from the residents, um, right, we've been talking about it, we've made, we made changes to the pavilion to house the workings for the splash pad, um.
And if our parks were disheveled or some of them needed work, I would feel less apt to wanna move forward with this, but our parks are beautiful, they're very well maintained, and I know we're gonna ride a year with little to no funds left in the park fund, but I think with our staff and everything, I think, I think that we can weather that storm. But it's all really gonna depend, like Mike said, like you said, on what comes back from that. You know, if we're eight months delayed on materials, well, then that's, that's that. There's nothing else we can do.
Right, and then, right, if we don't get the grant.
Right.
We're not doing it.
We're not doing it anyway, yeah.
Yep.
So.
I just might fear that if we do get it, I mean.
But you have it mapped out, if we, i- if we move forward, if they say they can complete that, you have it mapped out fairly well that we should be able to complete the project without any issues.
Yep.
So.
Park board will just have to wait till 2025, when they get their next allotment of CIP funding to see how they want to spend that.
Right. And we'll have to save for a few years, because I think the next, like, the dog park won't be so bad, but I know they wanted to improve in parking lots and stuff in Meadow, and that's gonna be a big, big project.
All right, anything more on that?
That's what I've got for you.
I think that's good, I, I like what you put together, you've done a good job of, of explaining it and getting all the numbers together, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, and like I said, eh, if, after this meeting.
You're gonna sleep tonight?
Hope so.
All right. Anything more?
Couple of weeks, but.
I believe.
That we will adjourn then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for coming in.
Thank you, Christian.
Appreciate it.
Yes, he does.